Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, February 16, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Four members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone colleagues. It is now 10:12 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But we also have two special presentations scheduled for this morning. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Han. Ms. Han.
Okay. I need help. Yeah, I heard it. I know, really. Morning, Mr. President, colleagues. I'm very pleased today, although it's a bit of melancholy, to honor Bob Henry from the Port of Los Angeles. Bob is finally retiring, so he says, after 35 years of dedicated service to our city. And during these 35 years, Bob has made so many numerous contributions to the Harbor Department. I understand, it was way before my time, but I understand that you were the first person to provide the first word processing center to the Harbor Department. So you brought new technology to the Harbor Department. I'm sure everyone, I don't even know how many people know that, but I'm sure they're grateful for it. But most of us, and for myself, since I've only been on the City Council a few short years, we know Bob as the face of the Harbor Department here on the City Council. And Bob has served as the council liaison for 13 years. He's our liaison here on the Council. He's the liaison to the mayor and the liaison to other city departments. And, you know, again, this is my first time to experience a City Council liaison, but one of the things we love about you is, particularly for the Harbor Department, we love it that you come to us most of the time early when you think there is a hot issue or a hot item that we should pay attention to. And I don't know how many of you have also experienced that, but Bob, if there's something on our agenda that affects the Harbor Department or the Port of Los Angeles, he's very good about making the rounds, talking to us, talking to our staff, and making sure that we're aware that item agenda number 13 on this Friday's council agenda is an important one. And we really appreciate that. That's always a lot better than looking at the agenda and going, "Oh, my gosh, there's an item on here that we have to pay attention to for the Harbor Department." So we've really loved that you've been very proactive, and that's something that I know, I appreciate, and I think all council members appreciate. But one of the greatest contributions that Bob has made, which sort of was out of your scope of duty, out of your job description, and something that will certainly live on well beyond your time at the Harbor Department, is Bob is single-handedly responsible for bringing back the historic red car to San Pedro. And of all the things you've done, I think it's one of your greatest achievements and something, again, that will be enjoyed and treasured, hopefully, by generations to come. You know, long before we even started working on our waterfront, long before we envisioned a new waterfront, you envisioned the red car being a piece of this future redeveloped waterfront. Mike Molina, who was the president of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, talks about you coming a long time ago and making your rounds to the different civic organizations and community-based organizations and talking about bringing back the historic red car. I don't know if you had very many believers in those days. You probably had a lot of skeptics, but it did not deter you. And you always envisioned this red car running along the waterfront, allowing people to enjoy what we currently have, but also you believed that someday, when we had all these major attractions at the harbor and in San Pedro, that this red car would connect people to that, and that is exactly what's happening. You know, the red car has such a great history in Los Angeles. Of course, business people, actually from downtown Los Angeles, used to take the red car at lunch. They would be in their business suits, they would take the red car down to the Cabrillo Beach Bath House, where in those days, they used to actually rent swimsuits. It's kind of a weird thought. And business people would rent a swimsuit at lunch, change out of their clothes at the bath house, take a swim in the ocean, shower, change, and take the red car back to their work in downtown. Jim and I remember the last red car ride in 1961 that our dad insisted that we take just for the memories, thinking that that red car would never come back. And 42 years later, it was great to ride in that inaugural ride of the red car in July of 2003. And if that's not enough, I didn't know this fact about Bob, Bob dedicates himself to volunteer work. He has donated hundreds of hours to make recordings for the blind and the dyslexic. Bob, you are a great man, and you've done great things over the last 35 years. We'll miss you, but I hope you stay around because I'm already envisioning extending the route of that red car. And I've got two specific things I think would be a great extension of that red car that I'd like to talk to you about. Before you speak, Bob, I think Julia wants to come up. Julian Gano would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilwoman Han. And members of council, the Harbor Department would like to thank you very much for acknowledging truly one of our best. She so eloquently covered much of the history of Bob's career, but I think we know him best as a troubleshooter. The guy who really can solve problems, just doesn't face them and give up and say, "This won't work." Bob has solved the problems. The red car is the best example. There was no history of the red car being revisited until Bob helped the California PUC, helped the Harbor Department, helped all the agencies in finding the solutions to bring back that track and that tourist attraction to San Pedro and the harbor. We will truly miss him. He's absolutely one of the good guys of the Harbor Department. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment, thank Janice for bringing Bob forward. Bob is one of those down-to-earth kind of guys, really, you know, quiet, but he makes it happen. I particularly want to thank you for your hard work. We brought the Chamber of Commerce from Panama to the city. You went through a lot on that endeavor. It was the first time that we had the port, because they are customers, they work with their port, and he actually put together the resources, helped maneuver a lot of the day-to-day stuff, the nuts and bolts to make it happen. And Bob did it quietly, and he resisted a little bit at first, but then he came along, and there he was, making it happen. So Bob, thank you for that and for all of the work you've done to introduce the port to us. Many of us don't get a chance to get out there. And when you talk about the realities of the major ports in the world and what it means to us, not only from a city point of view, from a regional and nationwide point of view, until you're there, you're actually riding amongst these giants that we call these huge ships, you can appreciate the role you play and the port does for the country. So thank you for your hard work. Another one of those unsung heroes and another class. It looks like they're meeting their golden years at a pace that I'm wondering, who are you guys leaving behind? So let's check this out. Thank you, Bob.
Ms. Labange.
Thank you. Ed, good morning again. And Ed and I were together this morning, he was a little ahead of me, at 6:00 a.m. at North Central Yard, where we honor two people, Warren Paul and Johnny Ross, for their combined almost 100 years of service to the city. And the story is Bob Henry, through Janice Han, one person makes a difference. And just as, where'd Julie go? Back to the port? Well, you should stand back up there. Julie, stand tall.
Julia.
Julia, I'm sorry. One person makes a difference, and I've been here for an awful odd time as an advocate for the Harbor Department, for Worldport L.A., for the work that you've done, just basically. But then he takes the extra giant step. You created that opportunity for the red car, and with the help of Janice and the mayor and all of us to push that along, but you did it, Bob, and that makes a real giant difference. And I can only wait to when it expands and the work of the promenade, all that is going on. It's really exciting. Now, I'm going to ask a tough question of these city champs here. How many of you have been on the red car? Okay, Coach, you got an assignment. Okay, all right. But Bob Henry, congratulations, because you've left a legacy for young people to learn about the transportation system that was so much integral to the part of San Pedro and all of Los Angeles. You're really a superstar city employee, Bob, because a lot of guys just work real hard and then go home. You worked real hard, and then after times, you worked real hard. So I thank you very much for that. I'm sorry I don't have my conductor's cap to give it to you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Well, Bob, on behalf of a very grateful mayor and a very grateful City Council, particularly the Councilwoman from the 15th District, we wanted to give you this beautiful resolution signed by everybody congratulating you on your retirement and, more importantly, thanking you for being, as Tom said, a superstar city employee.
Thank you.
And, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to, I'm going to let Bob speak, but, you know, to thank our great artists down in the Graphic Arts Department, Creative Services. Look, they did a little red car shadow on this resolution. They do such a great job. Let's give them a hand. Okay, Bob.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It has been an interesting 35 years. I graduated from UCLA back in 1969, when we had a Heisman Trophy-winning quarterback. It's been a long time since we had one since, but there's a lot of hard-working employees in the city, and I was in a position where I was a little bit more visible than most. And there are a lot of people out there working hard, and there's a lot of people here in City Hall who do a lot of things behind the scenes. And right up in the front there, you have the City Clerk's Office, who do a lot of work for us. You don't see it all, but it just, when I bring stuff down here, I'm always in a panic trying to get something done. They come through all the time. There's a lot of great employees out there. Building the red car was one of the things that, I still don't know how I wind up with that assignment, but there was a lot of skepticism at the beginning, and I was not going to fail. It was something we just had to do, and it was. What I tried to do is, we tried to open the waterfront up, one of the first projects to open the waterfront up to tourists, because we had the cruise terminal where we're not getting good service to get people into San Pedro. And it's been very exciting to watch. We've carried 129,000 people in the last year and a half on it. And I get comment cards, we have a comment card that they're to mail back to me. This gentleman mailed back to me that he had a great time in the red car ride. His father was a motorman for 17 years on the original PE. Anyway, he says, "What memories?" And that's what makes the whole project worthwhile, is feedback like this. One of my regrets, though, is that since I've been working on this for so much, you haven't seen me very much down here. I just come down, and I really have to come down, because I've been involved with trying to build and run a railroad. But my replacement over here, Tish Lorenzana, stand up, Tish. You'll be seeing her around City Hall here. She's going to start training. Hopefully, you'll see more of her than you'll see of me, and she'll be shadowing me. She'll also be sitting on the meeting, so come over and say hi to her. And if you have any Harbor Department questions, Tish, if she doesn't know the answer, we'll certainly find them out for you. But it's been a fun ride for the last 35 years. Come on down to the harbor. Come down this summer, because now we have the bridge lit after 17 years of work by a great Citizens Committee. We have the first cruise ship promenade, the first element of the whole promenade put in place. This summer, we'll have the Harbor Gateway Project onboard. We'll have the Harbor Parkway onboard. But when you do come down, like we say in the brochure, ride the red cars. Thank you very much.
May I do my next presentation? Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we have some great athletes here in the chambers today. Why don't you all come on up and stand behind me? You know, I love to show off all the great athletes in San Pedro. Well, this time, they've outdone themselves. This is hard to grasp, but within a 12-hour span, the Pirates of San Pedro High School captured three city titles. Let's start with first title, girls volleyball. The girls volleyball team beat the Venice Gondoliers, sorry, Cindy, in a very close battle to win their first championship. And as I understand it from some of the reports, the five starters of the team, Alex, Samantha, Jenny, Shannon, and Amber, are known as the Fab Five. They probably don't even know who the original Fab Five was, but this being their very first city championship, it makes it so exciting for these young women. Congratulations, girls. And I'd like to present the co-coaches, Vivian Gosnell and Ian Dixon, with this plaque. Where are the coaches? Coaches, come on. Just Vivian. Vivian, come on up. Congratulations on your first city title for these girls, and I would like to say a few words.
Sure. Well, on behalf of the other co-coach, Ian Dixon, he couldn't make it here today, but we wanted to thank the City Council and the mayor. We really appreciate it. These girls are wonderful. They're a great team to work with. We had a lot of fun getting to the city championship, and hopefully, we'll see them again there next year. But thank you.
Congratulations. Little-known fact, I was the MVP of my volleyball team when I was a senior in high school. Okay, now we'll go to the boys' and girls' cross-country title. They beat Birmingham, they both beat Birmingham, by one point to win their fourth straight title and their fifth title in the last six years for the girls' cross-country team. These ladies are absolutely incredible. The boys' cross-country team also won the city title this year by beating Birmingham. It was their third straight title, and this is a great fact. The boys' and girls' cross-country teams made city history by being the first to sweep the boys' and girls' titles three straight years. It's hard to say "girls rule" when we have the boys' teams here too, but I'm going to say it anyway. Girls rule. Coach Thompson, I want to present you with both of these plaques and want to know if you want to say something. Hey. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, congratulations and thanks for giving me more bragging rights.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Han and the entire council. Unfortunately, our principal, Mr. Walters, had a busy meeting today that he could not attend, but he wishes the best to you. I'd like to thank all of San Pedro, administration staff, and especially these young people behind us who ran so hard and so well this year. It was a great time, and again, hopefully, we'll see you next year. And our captain of the girls' team, Jackie Conlon, has a presentation for you, Councilwoman.
Oh, great. Oh, I love it. Yeah, it's great. There's a long sheet. To be part of a team is great. To be part of history is even better. All right. Is it cute? Thank you. Well, these are outstanding young men and women standing behind me. You must be very proud, but not only San Pedro is proud, but the whole City of Los Angeles is extremely proud of you today. And I have certificates for all of you that we'll pass out in the back. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Vivergosso, Weiss, Sainpedea, 14 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Vivergosso moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves and Mr. Weiss seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Let's actually go through the agenda, dispense with consent to items, and we'll take general public comment before taking up items called special.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, items 1 through 4 are ordinances relative to street lighting districts.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Members wishing to call any of these items special, items 1 through 4, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 5 through 11, excuse me, 5 through 12.
Members, items 5 through 12 now before us, public hearings have been held in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Zine.
9 and 12. Would like to combine them, please.
9 and 12. Call special by Mr. Zine and they are interrelated. We can consider them concurrently. Any other specials, members, on items 5 through 12? Seeing none, let's open the roll and the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 13 through 36. 10 votes are required for consideration. And just for council's information on item number 35, the ordinance that is, excuse me, the resolution that's before council is correct and there was an error on the agenda. It's amending a prior council action.
Okay. Items 13 through 36 now before us, members, and with that clarification, we can consider item 35 as well. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Any specials on items 13 through 36? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those items are approved. Yes, Mr. Labange?
35, forthwith without prejudice.
Forthwith on item 35 and I believe Mr. Garcetti would like to move reconsideration of item number 11. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. Item 11 is reconsidered and call special by Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 37 is the closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
Next item after that is on the continued agenda, item number 38.
And we do have a card on item 38. We'll call that special to hear from members of the public.
Mr. President, I believe there is a request to continue that matter too for one month, 30 days, and that would be March 18th.
Okay. If there's no objection, then that shall be the order. Item 38 is continued. And if that's the end of our agenda, let's now...
President, can we have a forthwith on number 14, please?
Forthwith on item 14. And this brings us to general public comment, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And the council calls forward Mr. Armando Herman, followed by our delegation from the South Central Farmers, Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, Irene Alanis, and Rick Alanis. Please come forward at this time.
Council members, it's unfortunately again, but first of all, I have to be here and say thank you for having me here. We're having a problem again in our area of Boyle Heights that has a concern for me and the community. Directing to you, Mr. Vivergosso, I feel you should know about the ineffective leadership of your aides in the Boyle Heights office. It hurts me very much to see that they cannot work with me, to work with the community as I believe in your position, you're asking of us to give us back the empowerment of our community, the empowerment for what we can do to better our communities. But I have aides that are working with me from your staff that are not very cooperative. And it hurts me because I have to work and I have to support my family. I have to support the neighborhood to bring it up. And I see that, there's no cooperation. Graffiti, trash and debris, those are the two biggest issues on my mind on a daily basis. I also wish to register a complaint about Ms. Lisa Sarno and Paul Hernandez later on with your office and the staff of Boyle Heights Council Office. Why? Because these issues have been ignored.
Sir, can I ask you to just address a specific issue if you can? If it's about Mr. Vivergosso, I'm sure he and his staff would be happy to meet with you on the side.
So, I am concerned for the community and I am concerned for the relationship that the community has with your office because there has been a sense of casual indifference to very serious issues that I have brought to your attention. Reducing quality of life in Boyle Heights is not acceptable. Community empowerment and better communities is what I'm looking for. This is a slap to the face of the public.
Let me ask you to conclude.
So, should I say?
Let me ask you to conclude. We have other speakers waiting.
Laws can never be enforced unless fear supports them.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, Maria Josefine Medina, and Irene and Rick Alanis.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins from District Number 9. I would like to warn the City Hall of Los Angeles, while it's on front page of Los Angeles Times this morning, we must be cautious of faking death in churches and temples for inheritors' money that was never black people. It was never reported to other family members by the funeral director over the phone. These people are now faking their funerals on the jail cells but were still alive. Minister Louis Falcone, Queen Nativa, Will Chamber, they are now putting on heads with brains, scuffed bones, that can change with a simple operation or a shot, that can change the shape and the look of their heads. Their leader, Madella, for 27 years in jail, was only doing Nixon-style of wickedness for exchange of every real star in California and USA to send a fake one to try to control USA government. Bishop Wayne Sylvester Davis put on a Hollywood head of ex-president Ronald Reagan and ex-president John F. Kennedy.
Can I ask you to conclude, please?
They was really faking the real Ronald Reagan. And my father is still alive this day.
Can I ask you to conclude, please?
The last attorney, okay, I have one minute. The last attorney that has been fired is working against the City Hall of Los Angeles to lose the case for any versa media group and others to beat this hall, the City Hall of Los Angeles because of being fired and working for another government, a Paris leader, Dr. Wanda A. Davis Turner, and Bishop Andrew C. Turner II because the USA killed them with USA military.
Okay, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to conclude now because we need to hear from the other speakers.
As of chopping them up into pieces.
Ma'am, you're done.
Their leader is now dead.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Irene Alanis, A-L-A-N-I-Z. I'm here, I have big concern about Garvanza Skate Park in Highland Park. The year 2003, 26 budget year, we had $700,000 for this skate park. And that was going to be 13,000 square feet. Now, 2005 and 2006 skate park, our park has shrunk from 13,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet. I'm here to ask the city council for $200,000 to reconsider for this skate park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Alanis and I represent stakeholder from Highland Park, Garvanza Skate Park. And it's taken us two years to get to this point right now where construction cost for the skate park at that time was between $20 and $25 a square foot, which is now, after two years of bucking headwinds, we have come to $35 to $40 a square foot for building From a 13,000 square foot to a 6,000 square foot is quite a difference. It's like a plate in a coffee saucer. Throughout the county of Los Angeles, the smallest skate park is 15,000 square feet. We originally started with 13. We're not asking for 15. We started with 13. We would like to have 13 if possible and if you have funds available, we appreciate it because it's not for just us, it's for the kids. It's for something for the kids to have an outlet to do in the afternoon rather than to find other avenues of gang activities or whatever. So, I appreciate all the help that I can get from all of you.
I appreciate it. And you should also know, our next speaker is going to be Maria Josefine Medina. Others of you who have submitted cards regarding the skate park have submitted under item 11, one of our agenda items. This is general public comment. This is for items that are within the city's jurisdiction but not on today's agenda. But thank you for being here.
Buenos dias, señores del Consilio. Mi presencia es para pedirles ayuda a conservar nuestro jardín.
Good morning, council members. I came here for help, to help, ask you for help for my garden.
En la 41 y Alameda, la razón que estamos empeñados en que se conserve este lugar, una de las primeras es de que necesitamos lugares verdes aquí en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
We're asking, the reason why we're adamant, that we're firm about having 41st Alameda, we want to conserve the green gardens.
La segunda razón y es bien importante para mí que ahí las personas de la tercera edad van a trabajar y es una terapia para ellos en lugar de estar en sus casas o apartamentos tristes. Ahí se la pasan feliz porque pueden compartir con demás compañeros y niños también.
The next reason is because the seniors, the elderly people, they're out in the garden working and instead of being at home watching television, they're out working the fields with their grandchildren, with their children, and they're showing them what to do.
Otra de las partes es ver feliz los niños, correr por los pasillos y saber que están seguros de andar en la calle, que pueden tener un accidente, envolverse en pandillas. Eso no pasa ahí porque todos somos una familia y cuidamos de todos ellos.
The other thing is we see the children running in the fields and they're happy, they're joyful, instead of running in the streets in crime and violence and gangs. And that doesn't happen there because we take care of them in the garden, in the fields.
Otra de las cosas es es bien importante para nosotros que la juventud se interese en conservar sana la tierra porque la necesitamos.
The other thing is we want the youth to conserve the soil, make it healthy because that's for us, that's for our future.
Otra de las cosas, yo me pregunto, gastamos tanto dinero en buscar formas de vida en otros planetas, porque queremos destruir la que tenemos aquí. Una de las cosas que yo pienso que nuestro espacio verde ahí es una célula de pulmón para nuestra Ciudad de Los Ángeles que está decayendo.
Another thing, why we spend millions and millions of dollars to look for life in other worlds or other things in other worlds when we could help our soil here? And there's so much contamination and impurities here, we could improve on our soil here.
Esas son las cosas importantes para mí. Les agradezco su atención, pero más les voy a agradecer cuando haga un tiempo de votar que piensen en las palabras que traigo para ustedes de parte de mis compañeros. Gracias.
I appreciate your time and consideration, especially when it comes time to voting. And our people thank you and we all thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. And we do have an additional card from Heinrich Keifer.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Heinrich Keifer. I'm the president of the Highland Park Skate Park Coalition and I'm here today to appeal for funds for the development of the Northeast Los Angeles Community Skate Park, better known as Garvanza Skate Park. Working with our community, District Council 14, the Department of Parks and Rec, the mayor's office, and the Highland Park Skate Park Coalition has helped to build consensus for the development of this new skate park. We have grounds improvements, we have the skate park itself, irrigation, landscaping. We're now faced with the need to increase funding due to the presently denied Reckon Park's proposal that our councilmen so graciously put together for us, the $300,000 proposal. As the Highland Park Skate Park Coalition president and also president of the Highland Park Kiwanis Club, I'd like to plead with the council to ask for help in reaching our goal. We have had some assistance and we're in the fundraising mode right now, developing partnerships with the business community, the Chamber of Commerce. We've recently been into some of the banks. We are additionally doing fundraising on our own. So, we want you to know that it's not, we're just not relying on government for this, but we're out there in the streets trying to raise additional funding, both the business and the residents of the area. So, please consider this skate park as an improvement for our area, for the northeast. It will serve the entire northeast area and it'll be a nice project for our youth. Also, we're also made up, the coalition is made up of skaters from elementary, middle, high school. We also have adult skaters and skate park professionals.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I was to speak at the same time on the same subject.
Well, ma'am, you...
I'm not sure if I filled my card out correctly.
You absolutely did, but this is not the time. You all submitted cards for item number 11. This is general public comment, not pertaining to any of the agenda items.
My general comment, though.
So, okay. Items called special, before we get to that, Ms. Hahn?
I need to request that my vote be changed on item 8. I was out of the room when that was voted on. And I'd like my vote to be recorded. No, I know it's not going to change the outcome, but...
Okay. Well, let the clerk make that change and it does not affect the outcome of the vote. And with that change, let's go ahead and send item 8 forthwith. And that does bring us to items 9 and 12. Call special by Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The items 9 and 12 that we're going to discuss deal with the medication, prescription medication for people of our city. And what we're attempting to do is establish a website to provide to our residents, to our seniors, to people who need prescription medication, the ability to obtain this at a much reduced price. And we have a board that's been presented, a comparison, and if we can get this on camera, comparison of United States and Canadian pricing for popular prescription medication. And if you look at the Canadian price, one medication is $40.22 and the same price in Los Angeles is $73.99. Another medication, $52.72, $106.99. And it goes on and on. There's one medication, $77.56 in Canada, $657 here in Los Angeles. So, as you can see, dramatic difference for the same medication produced by the same manufacturer. And what we find is an incredible price increase for people in our city. So, what we're asking for is a task force to be established. And this task force we're asking would be designed to study and report on the feasibility of the legal issues, oversight of an established website, so our constituents in the City of Los Angeles will be able to purchase prescription medication at a much reduced price. ITA is necessary to be involved in this, City Attorney, Department of Aging, Department of Disability, Personnel Department, Lasers, and any group that deals with seniors or any group that deals with medication. any group that deals with medication. City Attorney's Office, we would ask to co-chair this with ITA, and the City Attorney could not establish, stated we could not establish a group purchasing program. Initially, we wanted to establish a group purchasing program, we'd be able to purchase medication for work comp and for other benefits. They ruled against that, but they did not opine on the establishment of a website, and that's what we're asking for, is this task force to be established to discuss the feasibility of establishing this website. ITA says it is feasible that we could establish that website to help our constituents, and it's interesting to note that in San Francisco, they have already implemented this. They link three Canadian pharmacies, which were certified the state of Minnesota, and they're currently doing that in the city and county of San Francisco. So what we're asking for is that the City Attorney's Office co-chairs this with ITA, and we have this group together, and we come up with a plan to save our constituents, the people of Los Angeles' money, will be able to make this purchase at a much reduced price. And I know that my office is dealing with members of Congress who are working on this, and we need to somehow bring relief to people who need prescription medication, and this chart graphically displays the cost between Canadian and the same exact medication purchased here in the City of Los Angeles. And I also want to add that we've been working on this for a long time, and Jeremy, who was with my office, I don't know where he went, went in the back room, but I want to also thank him for what he's done to help with this, and my staff is continuing to try and bring about a sense of cost control with the industry. So that would be the request for those two items, that we would have this task force established, move forward, and help all the people in our city that are required to have prescription medication. Thank you.
Mr. Labanche.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, for your leadership in this. Question I want to ask, is there a representative from the city? Yeah, thank you. Just one minor question that may have absolutely nothing to do with it, but I read a comparison of the United States and Canada pricing for popular prescription drugs, and this may not be in the same, and there's a little drug in this microphone, but the word drugs, you know, we spend billions of dollars to fight drugs. The question I just want to ask you, counselor, if you could, is there any way to, where would we go to try to, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I'm reading that to talk to popular prescription meds, they call them meds now, I hear that now, med, medicines, because we tell our children that drugs are bad, and we tell our children that drugs are a challenge. I know it's a little offline, and I know our city attorney at the desk here may get mad at me for talking about that, but I want to, I want help there because I think it would be something important. So if you could advise me on that, whether it's offline or right now.
If that's agreeable, that's not a problem.
I mean, I'm just thinking, I don't know, Dennis, you're-
Hit that switch. We call it a drugstore, and for many, many years, prescription medication, prescription drug, basically, it's the same term. If you say you're a pharmacist and you prescribe medication or you prescribe drugs.
But people, I'm just, I'm just, members recently, sitting on the couch with my six-year-old son, a commercial came on about this. I thought of you first, Dennis.
Thank you.
Because you're senior to me, and they were talking about seniors, and they talked about the problem of drugs, and my son, who's six, said, hey, Dad, I thought drugs were bad. And then I thought and thought and thought, okay, here he's getting, and other six-year-olds and ten-year-olds and teenagers are being pounded, but drugs are bad, and when are we going to possibly start an effort to call it meds? Because I saw that, M-E-D-S, meds, like medications.
Right.
Save on meds and pharmaceuticals.
Instead of save on drugs, save on meds.
Right, right.
But anyway. We want to save on the money.
I just want to ask, I took, I took my time, I got thirty-one seconds left, I'll stop now. Would the fine council look at that and maybe see if there's anything we could do? I know we'd have to talk to USDA, which would be the USMA, if it was changed.
US Drug Administration?
Right, yeah, US Meds Administration. Anyway, thank you for the time, I owe it to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Labanche. Other members wishing to be heard.
Quality debate from Marshall High.
Ashes time. Sing, now let's open the roll in the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is both items nine and twelve. Next items, please.
Item eleven was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Today, colleagues, we have before us the consolidated plan for the City of Los Angeles, which is one of the most important things that we vote on here in council chambers each year, at a time when there are unfortunately increasing cuts from Washington DC on the cities, not just this city's, but throughout the country's allocation of block grant money, and noises that that may go even further next year. This makes this year's plan more critical even than in past years. We have before us a plan for housing with people with AIDS, housing opportunities for people with AIDS, emergency shelter grants, our home dollars, and our block grant monies, all programs which are proven, tried, tested, which have tremendous oversight here in Los Angeles, as well as oversight from our federal masters. But we are looking this year in trying to protect what we've been able to do from senior programs for people to fix their homes and to be able to have livable apartments and houses, to some of the catalytic projects in communities, whether it's recreation centers, job programs, housing opportunities. Each one of these programs will go a long way in making a difference here in Los Angeles. There are a number of amending motions that we have circulated, which tweak some of the fine points of the plan, but we have this plan being shared very fairly according to poverty in all parts of the city, from the San Fernando Valley to San Pedro, east side, west side, South LA, and the city center. And I want to thank my colleagues in the HCD Committee for helping get us through what's a very difficult year, and for the understanding of community groups who in past years may have had opportunities, but this year, we literally had hundreds of millions of dollars of requests that we could not fund this year as we see that pie shrinking. But we do think that these are the core needs and the core programs that we want to protect. We have in those tweaks some things to make sure that our services and administrative caps are taken care of, and we appreciate both the housing and community development departments' flexibility on that, and we'll make sure that they're made whole as well throughout the year in their administrative needs. And lastly, I just want to reiterate to everybody that our voices will be so critical nationally in giving these programs a human face, from LA's Best to childcare centers throughout the city, to making sure that people know what this does in their own community, and making sure that that is protected in a nonpartisan or bipartisan way in Washington. It should be our highest legislative priority as a city. So with that, I ask for your support today of the consolidated plan. I ask for your support of the amendments which Mr. Reyes and Mr. Cardenas, myself have offered here today, which are kind of, and Mr. Parks as well has one. They're really about tweaking what we already talked about in committee, and with that, I hope we can continue to do what we can to revitalize Los Angeles' neediest communities. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn. Ms. Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, Ms. Hahn.
I'd like to make a motion to reopen public comment. I know there's a few people here that have submitted cards that would like to speak on this, if that's okay.
Second.
How about ten minutes, folks? Okay, so before I begin to call names for the members of the public who are here to address the council on this item, let me say a couple of things. I'm going to ask the city clerk to please put up a ten-minute clock that you can all monitor as you proceed. Ten minutes, and we have a lot of cards, so I'm going to ask each of you to be very brief, if you can keep your comments to, you know, thirty to sixty seconds at most. We'd really appreciate this. We have had multiple public hearings on this item already in the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, so this is yet an additional opportunity for the public to address the council. As I read names, I'll read them in groups of names, and I'd ask that you form a line behind the podium, that's going to expedite the public hearing. And even though I won't have a set limitation for each individual speaker, please know that the more time you take, that the less number of people who are waiting behind you will have to be heard. So at this point, let's call forward Robert Donan, followed by Nancy Wyatt, Heinrich Kiefer, who spoke already under general public comment, Irene Casmer, and Mel Grayson. There's other cards in here, so let's start with these five. If you would please form a line behind the podium, we'd really appreciate it. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council President, Madam President Pro Tem, Mr. Assistant President Pro Tem, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, my name is Robert Donan, and I come before you today as an individual and a friend of the Museum of Design and Creators. It is an honor and a privilege to appear before you today. I stand before you today, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, to urge that CBDG funding be allocated and granted to MODAC. Your action today will allow MODAC to begin to acquire property to find a home for MODAC which will house its extensive collection, which would benefit the citizens of the City of Los Angeles and benefit all council districts for years to come. I ask and urge all of you to take a leading role in making this outcome a reality. Your action today will set in motion previous council actions taken but not yet implemented. This would send a clear message near and far, locally, statewide, nationally, and globally. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I know you seek to build upon past city, on past city leaders and past council wishes, intentions, goals, and accomplishments, yet seek to define your own vision and legacy. I realize that this is a difficult year given budget constraints and scarcity of resources and hard choices must be made. I urge you, Mr. Mayor and members, to find MODAC, to fund MODAC as requested, allowing fashion to prosper and thrive, a benefit to all citizens and to all council districts. I thank you very much for your consideration and ask for your I-vote. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do recognize that there's a number of people here on the MODAC message. You've had one speaker already. I'm going to call others, but I may hold some of the MODAC speakers to allow people here on behalf of other organizations-
I'm sorry, I can't make out what you're saying, but I'm speaking to the skate park issue, just briefly.
Right, and there's a number of you here as well. Go ahead.
Yes, you called my name. Good morning, council members, I'm Nancy Wyatt. I'm the vice president of this Highland Park Skate Park Coalition, and I'm here this morning along with others to call your attention to the fact that we are in process of building a skate park for the entire community of the northeast. This is a project of CD fourteen, and we have had CDBG money in the past, but due to an extended delay, our funds have, or let's put it this way, the materials have increased in cost, and we are now having to raise an additional, well, three hundred thousand, but we have gotten it down now to about two hundred thousand. Now, this is very important to the community because the children and the teenagers of Highland Park are skating in the streets and climbing the fences in the junior high and doing damage to the junior high. It's a real need to put these kids into an arena that will be challenging, that will attract them, that will give them the ability to excel, and their desire to have a sport that they like, and we just want you to know that we are working very hard to get money, and we would sincerely plead that if there is any way that our petition could be reconsidered, I know it was presented and turned down, I don't know the entire process, but please help us to put our kids in a better situation, teenagers, you know how it is at that age. So we thank you for your attention, and whatever you can do, please help us.
Thank you very much. Pausing the clock. Other people here as part of the Skate Park Coalition who spoke under general public comment, hold on, give me a second here, ma'am. Heinrich Kiefer and Irene Alaniz, they had spoken previously, so-
Good morning, City Council, my name is Irene Alaniz. I'm here very concerned about Garvanza Skate Park. As I said earlier, it's shrinking and shrinking by the day. In a few months, it's going to even be a higher cost. I'm pleading with City Council to allocate three hundred thousand dollars, and I'm also pleading and begging with Antonio, CD fourteen, Villagrosa, to find the money. Please, please find the money. We talk about youngsters every single day, losing their lives, not having anything to do out there in the street. Please, this is a very positive project. Please, Council, Antonio Villagrosa, find the money. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let me call the next speakers up in the following order, please. Mel Grayson, to be followed by Don Schultz, Candido Maris, and then Irene Casmer and the other folks here on behalf of MODAC. So Mel Grayson.
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay, on behalf of MODAC, my name is Mel Grayson. I'm a faculty at Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising in Los Angeles. I'm a professor of fashion design, and I'm here to promote MODAC and ask for you to give us funds so that we can secure a museum for Los Angeles, to secure all of the items that we have, so that we can put fashion on the map for Los Angeles.
And you're looking pretty sharp this morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Don Schultz, please, followed by Candido Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Don Schultz, president of Van Nuys Home Association, more important today, co-chair for the Citizens' Advisory Panel for the Van Nuys Community Courts. My co-chair is my good friend Candido Maris. I'd like to thank the council for at least getting a line item for the community courts to get a program that has been so healthy and so good for our community. The Central Business District in Van Nuys has been in need for a refurbishment for years. This program has been in place for several years, and it's actually doing the job. The difference between December first and now and before is very noticeable. The area is starting to deteriorate because we've been without the Community Courts program since early December. We urge you to pass this on, and we thank you again for giving us a line item, fifty thousand dollars in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Again, as co-chairman of the Community Court program, we thank you, Councilman Cardenas, for the fifty thousand dollars, again, to bring life to the Community Court. But as a member of the Cup, and I'm appointed by Councilman Greg Smith, I'm very, very concerned about the cuts that we took this year, close to sixteen million dollars. We know, we feel, we feel the pain of those sixteen million dollar loss. Next year, it could be as high as sixty million dollars. As a Republican, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that this president understands that we cannot tolerate those kind of cuts, and the fact that they may move the funding from the HUD over to Commerce can also have another effect that financially could be devastating. So please, we make, we need to make sure that this is a front burner for us and that we get as many dollars we can for the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we have three minutes and thirty-five seconds to hear from Irene Casmer, Lauren Michelle Casmer, Bruce Casmer, Gerald Casmer, Christine Albers, and Jerry Pittman.
Hi, I'm Lauren Michelle Casmer, and I'm speaking on behalf of my mother Irene Casmer, the founder of the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. She has a slight cold, so pretend I'm her. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council President, Madam President Pro Tempore, Mr. Assistant President Pro Tempore, and members of the council, good morning. Her name is Irene Casmer, and she's the founder and chairman of the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. And on behalf of the Board of Directors and Friends of MODAC, it's an honor and a point of privilege to appear before you today. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're here to urge that the community development block grant funding be appropriated, allocated, and awarded to MODAC. This funding was applied for properly, meeting all the mayor's funding priorities for the thirty-first program year consolidated plan, and deserves to be awarded to the museum. It would allow MODAC to begin the process of acquiring property to find a home for the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators, which would house the extensive collection which would benefit the citizens of the City of Los Angeles and benefit all council districts for years to come. By taking action today, this would set in motion previous council actions taken but not yet implemented. This would send a clear message both near and far, locally, nationally, and globally. I know you seek to build upon past city leaders and past council wishes, intentions, goals, and accomplishments, yet seek to define your own vision, accomplishment, and legacy. Former mayor Tom Bradley and the CRA in its previous iteration asked me to establish MODAC, and asked Irene to establish MODAC, a nonprofit organization to feature the past, present, and future of the fashion industry, which would create and retain jobs and expand education in this key industry segment and constituency. Mayor Bradley, along with previous CRA chairman, urged and recommended that Irene go to the Hearst Corporation concerning the Herald Examiner Building when the Hearst Corporation sought to demolish that building in nineteen eighty-nine. The building is standing today, given that the- The building is standing today, given that the mayor wanted the building to be a Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators, and that the mayor would work with MODAC and other city leaders and stakeholders to secure this strategic landmark. Regretfully, Mayor Bradley is not here to see this transformation and transaction become a reality. However, this is something you can act on in his spirit and memory, and would be a feather in your collective cap and benefit the citizens of the City of Los Angeles, as well as contribute employment, economic, and well-being to our great city. MODAC has been a part of the strategic plan for downtown Los Angeles, at the urging of former Mayor Bradley and Mr. Spivak from the CRA, and you, Honorable Mayor and City Council, passed a motion in 2001 to support the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. We realize that this is a difficult year, given the budget and the competition for scarce dollars being fierce, and there are hard choices to be made, but we urge you to allow MODAC to be funded as requested, allowing it to become a reality and allowing the fashion industry to continue to prosper and thrive, and as a strong benefit to the leadership and citizens of the City of Los Angeles. We also have a letter here from Ann Cole, who is the founder of Ann Cole, another innovator in the design history of Los Angeles, and she couldn't be here today.
Can I ask you to wrap it up, please? If I may ask you to conclude?
What is that? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
If I may ask you to conclude, our time is up.
Okay. We have letters of support for many people with us.
Thank you all very much for being here. Your cards will be added to the file for members' edification. The Casmer delegation was also present in committee and testified in committee. Ms. Han, you had called for the public hearing. Did you also wish to speak on this item? No? Then let me recognize Mr. Cardenas next.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind Angelinos, when you hear the President of the United States, like we just heard George Bush just a month ago, talk with a smile on his face about, "I'm going to cut 150 programs of the federal government," this is one of them. I was just talking to Eric Garcetti, the chair of the committee that handles this issue, and he was telling me that at minimum, that speech hit the City of Los Angeles by $15 million. Now, some people might say, "Well, that's good, the federal government's saving money." Well, with all due respect, they're not saving money. All they're doing is diverting it to other places. The next day, the president talked about sending another $80 billion to Iraq, but he doesn't count it in the budget. Yet at the same time, he was bragging about cutting 150 programs to help Angelinos and other people throughout the country, and this is how we're being hit. $15 million just in this one item, item 11, on this agenda that we're talking about today, and we're hearing the heartaches, and we're hearing the pressures that our community members are suffering because they need another $300,000 for this very important project. They need $50,000 for this life-saving project, and on, and on, and on. I think it's very important for everybody to understand that when you hear a politician talk about cutting money, you need to hold that politician accountable and say, "Well, what are you cutting? What does that mean?" The president got applause when he said that. I shuddered as I was watching his speech, because the first thing that I said to myself, "Uh-oh, there goes another politician talking about cutting money, but not saying what it is." And that's scary, because this is what's happening, $15 million just in this program alone. And this program pays for programs for our youth, this pays for programs for our seniors, this pays for programs for Angelinos. If you've been reading the papers lately, they've re-announced, which happens year after year after year, the state of California is short-changed another $60, $70 billion again, that the federal government takes out of our taxes and doesn't return back. And I'm not saying that we should get every penny back or what have you, because some things are paid for by the federal government that aren't necessarily allotted back to a state, but you have other states, for every dollar that they get, they get $2 back. And another state gets $3 back for every dollar they send to the federal government. What's wrong with this picture when we have potholes to fill? What's wrong with this picture when we don't have people attending to our children in our parks? What's wrong with this picture when we can't maintain our facilities because the federal government says, "I'm cutting back programs"? Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is what the president was talking about. They're cutting back this program, $15 million in one speech, and you're here telling our city council that you need just $50,000 to raise the quality of life for the people in your community.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you.
Mr. Villagrosa.
Well, Mr. Cardenas hit it on the button. That's certainly where a big part of this problem is. Let me share and thank my constituents. I want to thank Everett and Heinrich and Nancy for coming, and all of you who are here today. I'm with you. I put in that application for the $300,000. Unfortunately, we weren't, 14th Councilman district wasn't able to get a penny of CDBG monies from the mayor's office, so I look forward to working with you to ask just why the 14th Councilman district couldn't get a penny of, you know, specific district CDBG monies. May have something to do with a number of things. We've got some broader monies, yes, we got the SEP program, some citywide dollars, but we didn't get any specific dollars, including this one. We had some 62 proposals in for the 14th Councilman district, including the skate park. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get it. So we'll continue to work with you to do that, because I agree with you, this park is important, it's critical for the young people in Highland Park and in the northeast area, and we're going to find that money somewhere. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to ask the CLA if they'd come to the desk. Hold my time, please. Colleagues, there's been a trend we've been going through for the past three, four years, and that trend has been how we've been cutting back on block grant funds have affected programs across the board, from housing to programs for youth, recreation, services, meals for seniors, all the way across. Sir, can you tell us in general how much has been cut back in the past three years, or ballpark figures?
Sure. We are, in the '05-'06 budget, we're basically back to '02-'03 levels. There was 108 total in '02-'03, 113 in '03-'04, 125 in '04-'05.
These are millions.
Millions, and we're back down to 109 million. A lot of that is due to the administrative cap that was at 25%, but had been reduced to 15%. The problem with that is a lot of the organizations funded within that cap don't necessarily qualify as CPDOs to be funded through actual program income. So there's a double difficulty of having less money and also having organizations not qualify for funding through other categories.
So programs that were once receiving funds from the city are wondering why they're not receiving funds today, and that's because they don't qualify anymore, given the change in rules?
A combination of not qualifying as well as less resources to go around and more demand.
Yeah. Colleagues, the first year that I came into office, I can't forget the line of people, because we had our committee hearing here, the line of people and organizations went all the way back to the room. This room was full of service providers, seniors, children, youth. We had postcards, we had crayon-colored messages from children who were going to be in a state of despair, because within weeks, the programs were going to shut down. I had a service provider, actually it was a childcare center, who literally marched around City Hall with the children and moms in tow, speaking of the childcare policy we're working on, and they literally marched around City Hall trying to get attention of why are they going to be left out in the street. So these are very real issues that we're going through, and each one is very important for many different reasons for each one of us. We're just going to have to bear down and deal with these cutbacks, and it's not an easy task, because I believe Councilman Garcetti, the chair, is trying his best to be equitable, but at the same time, there are some very razor-sharp cuts we're going to fill, and it's not going to be pleasant. And again, I'm hoping that CDD, the CDD staff here? Is our director here? Just give me a couple more, I just need to ask this question.
Good morning.
Last week, we introduced a motion that states we need to notify the nonprofits, the service providers who are in the target to be cut. Are we moving to warn people? Are we letting them know that the funds are now being depleted? We're not getting any more funds from the federal government? Are we giving the service providers enough time as possible to gear up for what could be inevitable?
Yes, Mr. Councilman, we are preparing that notice to let them know both about the cuts and how they ended up this year, but also about what the cut that's being proposed with the federal cuts, what the impact could be to the programs that are funded this year, that will not be able to be funded with the kind of cuts that are being contemplated at the federal level.
So right now, we are going to fill $115 million, correct? This year, is that what it is, this year? What's the shortage of block grant funds?
About $15 million in CDBG funds this year, and while it's very vague in the legislation, there are estimates that it could be cut by about 40% additional, so another 40 or 45 million in additional cuts to the CDBG program.
So while that's happening, given the presentation from Councilman Cardenas, it's conceivable the whole department could just disappear, and all the money could be moved to another area, and we don't even know what that's going to be like.
Correct.
So we could be cut down to zero eventually?
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues, it's not a good time, and we need to be ready, and our constituents are going to feel it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members of the council wish to be heard on this item? If not, Mr. Garcetti, Chair of the Committee, I know there's been a number of amending motions that have been introduced. If you can provide guidance to the, if you can provide guidance to the council as to which ones were entertaining and which ones are being referred to committee?
If we can, I would move each one of the motions, Mr. Cardenas, as I would send to committee, as we need to try to identify where sources of funds would be for that, but otherwise, the rest are reprogrammings essentially of existing money. Some people had changes of the particular projects and takes care of the remaining balance that was there, so I would move all of them as friendly amendments, except for that one, which I would send to committee.
And that would be, I'm sorry, just for clarification, 11D?
11D.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, then on Mr. Garcetti's motion, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please, that is item 11. And next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And that would clear the desk for closed session.
Okay, we also do have one speaker card on our closed session item from Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. This is item 37.
My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. I would say no on this item concerning education and neighborhood committee program that is being placed on our agenda, which is concerning May the 17th election. We must at this time say no, because of what have happened in Asia disaster, they are now moving north in California, almost toward Mexico, so for out. So I'm very afraid who is going to be over these committees, which might be eight different head leaders. We have to be very cautious of President Fox, who is the president of Mexico, who is observing what is happening in Asia.
Thank you, ma'am.
And now he sees where they are coming. So I am very much concerned concerning any committee, a new committee agenda, Neighborhood Watch program, to watch over a certain district.
Okay, thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item 37. And if there's nothing further than in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Sergeants, please clear the chambers.